Yes. A little bit, anyway, just to thank you Curry for coming. We really appreciate that. Let's introduce ourselves here so we know, you'll know who we are. You might know some of us. Jim, start with Jim. He's a retired Baylor College Professor. He was associated with the Historic Preserv-- excuse me, Historic Museum, Polk County Historical Society a few months ago. And he has a great interest. His family's been here since eighteen nineties, eighties, nineties. Okay, a few decades off there. Dan?
Dan Rogers.
Dan owns the building. We got the $264,000 grant, thank you. And he's very ardent about fixing that place up back to the eighteen nineties, eighteen nineties. And he owns a number of buildings downtown and has lived downtown and treasures his buildings.
Sue Roden, Dallas historian, ex-volunteer at the museum.
She's got a big historic collection of Dallas and so forth. And she acts as kind of our go-to for information and photos and that sort of thing downtown. You know me. We have one other person who will arrive, I guess, a little late. His name is Ron Woodruff. He's also on the Historic Preservation Commission in Monmouth. He's a historic architect, Historic Preservation Architect, and shows a great deal of interest in what we're doing here in Dallas. He's a real asset to us. We also have a window restorer on our design committee now who works here in, out of Dallas and around. You're probably familiar with him, Joseph. I can never remember his last name. Anyway, us killing a little time. We'll just get started and Ron can catch up. We have, we've been at this for several years with only three of us. We've expanded to five, which kind of changes our mission a little bit. We've got more depth and more resources. And I think the city's recognizing that, that we're more capable now. And so we've got several missions. The one we're on right now is writing narratives of thirty-three buildings downtown that are contributing in the downtown historic district. And that's part of that grant that you gave us. They, she manages the grant system over there, which is for us, the CLG Certified Local Government Grants, which is about twelve or fifteen thousand dollars every two years. Is that about right? And then we have to match it fifty-fifty, which we've done this year was for essentially marketing the historic district downtown with logos and histories and tours and website and other things. And I think that's a good use of the money right now. We have set a great store by our historic buildings here in Dallas, partly because I think we didn't have the money in the fifties and sixties to tear them down like a lot of people did. So we just covered them up with sheet metal or plywood or stucco or something, but, right? You know, Dan's naughty, yes. And we tear that stuff off and there's the original building. And, you know, one of those diamonds in the rough deal you've helped us with a couple of times. And for instance, the Blue Garden was the biggest wreck we had in town. I mean, it was just awful. We, the city council, right in this room, declared it a dangerous building, the only one that I know that we did during my tenure here. And we got fixed up and there's a really thriving business in there now. It's a worldwide business, the largest auction of its kind in the world. And they sell about eight thousand items on there each auction. So something fifty, sixty thousand or more for some items. So, and they get visitors from all over the country. So this is becoming much more of a vital downtown, but we're still sort of a backwater because people don't think of us as, we don't wine tasting, we don't have brew pub, we don't have bookstore, we don't have live music to speak of, we don't have live theater, and all those things that people look for in thriving downtowns these days, small towns. But we're working on all of that. We don't have very many vacancies, do we? Very few vacancies. Is that right Tyler? We're really low on vacancies. So if somebody wants to set up a business here, there's not a lot of choices downtown. So that's to our benefit. Well, I've killed five minutes. What we're here to do today is to learn from Curry. Curry knows a lot and she's a real good presenter and knows this subject like the back of her hand. I've heard her presentations are just really good. And I think it's going to be helpful as she explains what we do and why we do it and her role in all this and Chipo's role in all this is to ask her a lot of questions. So she would like that for two reasons. Let me guess. Number two, she likes to answer questions and she has the answers. And number two, she wants to know what we don't know. It's really useful for her to know. So if you've got some question you think is really primitive or basic, ask her because she will fill in, flesh out these questions with good information. So we'll learn about what we're doing. In particular, with us being in transition from just a three-member group to a full five-member group, that changes the formula quite a bit. And the regulation that we have on design review, for instance, that she reviewed and is now, I believe it's passed the planning commission and is going before the city councils. Is that correct Tyler? That's the next step? I assume it will be approved without any significant changes. So that's what we're dealing with in that end. They've separated the two, the single regulation we had on the duties and so forth, the duties and responsibilities of the group and the formation of the group from the historic preservation piece of it. So there's actually going to be two ordinances covering this field where right now, until they change it, there's just a simple one. It covers our formation, number of players and our duties and all that. So today, I think we'd want to deal with both of those issues. What do you see as our duties? How do we execute them? And then what do we do? Design review, local register type work and that type of thing. We have about thirty-some-odd buildings on our local register right now, which isn't enough. We don't even have the Historic Preservation, excuse me, Historic District on that, though we're deep into the process of getting the Historic District listed as a resource, which is really important, super important. And I think that goes, it's been through the planning commission, hasn't it Tyler? And is to the council? Or is it still pending before the planning commission? You know, the designating the Historic District as a resource, historic resource? I thought we had started the process. We at least recommended from this group that they add it.
Since they've had some full agendas?
Yeah, they have. They have the seven-hundred-page item. Like Monmouth. Okay. It should be a slam dunk. I mean, it's standard practice to include it as a resource, is it not? The Historic District? Anyway, I think it is. It's assumed it would be. Okay, off we go. Hopefully Ron will come. Let me text him while you're introducing things.
I'm going to move this a little bit, but I will try to lean into it. I'm Curry Gill. I am the Grants and Outreach Coordinator for Oregon Heritage, which is part of Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. We're based in Salem. And I'm also the Certified Local Government Coordinator. So when we say CLG, that's what those words mean. They don't actually provide a lot of meaning to what you're doing. But what that means is that the Certified Local Government is participating in a federal program through the National Park Service. And it's a requirement of the State Historic Preservation Office, which is part of Oregon Heritage, to coordinate this program. So we're required from the federal government in doing our state-level work. They acknowledge that we can't at the state know everything about the local communities in Oregon. And so there should be local programs who document, designate, and care for their historic properties. And we need your expertise because we don't know your history or your community as well as you do. So that's kind of the intention of this program and why it was created from the National Park Service. We are also required to award a portion of the grant funding we get to coordinate the State Historic Preservation Office programs to the local government programs. We're required to award about 10%. We award around 25% of the funding that we get. We were a little bit worried this year that we were not going to get our funding, but it was released. We think that it will be funded in '26. It is currently in the House budget and the Senate budget, some amount. So we're hopeful that it will continue to be funded and we will continue to be able to offer you new grant opportunities. So I just wanted to share a little bit of that context so you understand where we're coming from and what our office does. So it's our role to help the local communities do the work. We have some basic parameters that Certified Local Governments need to follow. Otherwise, it's kind of up to you all to decide your priorities. And this handout is the approach that we take in our office to achieve a strong preservation in your community. And it starts out with documentation, which you all have done. I'm going to focus a little bit today on your downtown since you did all the work to create a district and you have a Main Street organization, so this is a great pairing. But do know that this applies to the whole community and you do have other properties outside of your downtown Historic District that are historic and you could use this process into the future to grow your list of designated properties or explore different time periods within your community that are significant and do preservation throughout the community. So survey is that documentation piece, figuring out kind of what you have going on and what are the stories and what are the time periods and what places still exist that convey that history and that story. For downtown, you did that work. And then the next step is designation. So in Oregon, there are two kinds of designation. There's National Register. That's the federal level of designation, which you completed with your downtown district. In some states, there is a state designation, but Oregon does not have a state designation. We have a database with information about historic properties, but it's not a state designation, solely informational. And then the other kind is local designation. So that's what we were just referencing. There has to be a local land use process to adopt properties as a local historic landmark. And then if those are adopted, they may have regulation and/or benefits to support their preservation. So it is common for a property that is listed on the National Register to then get a local designation, but it's not a requirement and the property owners need to be in agreement for that local designation. So it sounds like you're doing that local designation process. I know you already have the National Register designation. So then the next step is the treatment. What do you do to help preserve these historic properties? And it feels like that's kind of where you are today. All along the way, and you've been doing this for the last several years, this whole yellow side is about public engagement and education. Now that you did the thing and got the designation, you got to keep talking to people about it or they're not going to remember why this stuff is important and that you want it to be protected and that it's meaningful to have this designation in these historic properties. So we carry that education and public education piece and incentive piece all the way through. That should be what's driving preservation in your community more than the regulatory process. If you do that regulation alone, it tends to become very unpopular very quickly. But if you bring people along and make it very easy to meet the historic standards and preserve their properties in a way that conveys that historic character, then they want to do it and it's easier and the regulation actually becomes less important. So as I was thinking about where you all are today, in particular with regard to the downtown Historic District, that kind of feels like where you are. You're still doing some of that public engagement with this tour process. You're doing code revision to talk about regulatory design review. And now is the time to keep people on board with doing that preservation work and making it as easy as possible for them to do that. Any thoughts or questions on that overall process?
If I may interject, that we have three organizations working the same territory, really, the Downtown Association, us, and the, three. I'll think of it. Oh, the Urban Renewal District. So you've got the same boundary lines essentially for all three. The Historic District takes the middle of it, but the other two operate in both the CBD downtown and just north on the river there. And the money can come out into that from the Urban Renewal District. That's kind of the deep pockets for major projects now that the legislature hasn't given us two-hundred or four-hundred thousand dollars every other year. So we work together on that. We're here, we don't have a big budget. We have that little budget that we talked about, twelve thousand or something. And the other organization does and they can give grants. So we can, one of our jobs is to assist them in getting grants. That money is a good palative for making friends. And so we have some capability of scattering that money around to encourage preservation. In fact, for the Urban Renewal, they have a point system now for granting grants and they're $25,000, 50% match, which is not a bad number. And a number of the points are awarded for historic preservation. Just to interject there.
Well, another component of your work, really similar to that, would be to help folks understand the availability of and how to access other incentive programs. So now that they're a National Register listed, they are eligible for two programs. One is the State Special Assessment Program. So that's a property tax assessment. That just was passed again in the Oregon Legislature for commercial properties. So they're eligible for this and it can be renewed ongoing. It's a ten-year program, but it can be renewed ongoing with a preservation plan. So that's one incentive to pay attention to. We are going to have a CLG workshop in November online where we'll be talking about the rules that are established for that program. And then the other program, if it's a fairly large project, there are federal income tax incentives. It's a tax credit program for up to 20% of the project. The project can last over five years. So if it's a good-sized project, that can have a pretty big impact using a tax credit program. So your role coordinating with Main Street or just on your own to reach out to property owners and help them understand these resources that they now have access to is something that you can provide. Another thing that supports being competitive in grant programs or successfully managing those incentive programs is when the property owner has a solid plan for their design, for the work that they want to do and that that meets the preservation standards. So we are seeing a lot of Certified Local Governments spending their CLG dollars on either preservation plans or facade designs or project specifications for properties that could be eligible for these programs to help them get that planning work done, which is often hard to find funding for.
We have instituted on our small grant program for Urban Renewal about three thousand, up to $3,000 for architectural and consultant work pre-construction. So we're, I think we're into that realm significantly. Plus, the Downtown Association also has been funding planning and consulting work.
That's a great way to ensure that the plans that are created meet the historic.
Very closely with Rebecca Ziegler, whom you're well familiar with. She's really great.
Yep, she is. So in that way, that's a way to help people kind of come to you with, or come to the city when they're coming to the city for project review to kind of ensure that their work already meets the standards and then it isn't an issue, they don't have a plan in mind that doesn't. And then you have to work through that process.
Our planners, by the way, have made note of the significant changes in historic preservation ordinances in terms of building codes and that kind of thing. And apparently they complicate things considerably. That's our view, their view. You can talk to them.
I'm not sure what you're referencing, so I could.
Their plan review is typically, they tell me, taking four to six weeks now for permits.
Okay, I haven't talked to anybody about that, so I'd be happy to have a conversation. I don't know the context, so.
This may be down in the weeds, but building, I think some of the, Dan might be able to tell us, sometimes it's complicated dealing with plans and whatnot to get permits and that sort of thing. There's.
Yeah, I don't know what aspect of my project is, it seems to be slow and I don't know if it's because there's a historical component, but it's been a month. I'm just trying to get a permit for some simple non-load-bearing partitions. So, and that seems excessive to me. And I don't, again, I don't know if that's just the way it is or if part of that is because of the historical aspect.
I think both. I think part of the thing is Dallas is a very popular place and we're building lots of housing. And at one point, there were 645 dwelling units in the pipeline about several months ago for construction, somewhere in the entree or toward turning dirt. So that's a lot for Dallas. And I think the guys are kind of busy.
Sure. I'm sure they're, all cities in the state are busy for a variety of reasons, whether it's project, actually projects being developed or managing all the different code adjustments that are being required at the state level. I would be surprised that anything internal was, interior was for historic. I don't, I don't think your code has interior except for public-owned properties.
First is the Carnegie Building. They had to preserve a lot of the interior in the Carnegie Building because it was original. And I thought that.
For per-city code?
Well, that was per the grant.
Right. So that is a grant requirement. That is not a local design review requirement.
No, it's not.
Right.
We care about facades mostly, or should.
Right. So any interior work would probably not come to this body for review.
No.
In fact, at one time, I think we were told that building owners could do just about anything they wanted with the interiors, but the exteriors were subject to strict codes.
Our case, we were referring to when you get a grant. The grant may have restrictions on how you can use it.
Another area where you can make it easy for property owners, and this is after you live with your updated code for a while, this is something that you can look into when you see what's coming your way as far as design review requirements. City of Salem has done this because they have a lot of projects happening and they have a lot of locally designated historic properties. But there's a list of, if you do it this way, it can be approved at the planning desk and does not have to come for design review. That is a really useful tool to expedite things. And sometimes people will be like, well, I wanted to do this, but if I don't have to go through design review, if I do this, I'm going to do this. So again, it's making it as easy as possible for them to do the thing that maintains historic character. Another way to provide that, especially for people who might be doing work, might be doing work on their interior and they want to keep the historic character, is to provide design guideline materials and tools for them to use to understand what those pieces on a historic interior might be important to keep to retain that historic character. That's a really helpful tool. A lot of people want to do that. They don't necessarily have to be forced to do it, but they don't necessarily know what they're doing is kind of ruining that interior. So those are really helpful tools. Having workshops, classes, written documents are a really good way to provide that public engagement and help people understand what those character-defining features are.
U R D, planning grants up to 3,000 do include interior design.
That's great. I don't know their requirements or if they focus on historic preservation at all. So that would be the.
Again, it's a point system. We want the whole, all the buildings in the district area to be good-looking and kept up and modernized if need be. And we have a special emphasis on historic preservation. There's kind of a bias toward historic buildings to work on them first and be more generous.
That's great. I think it's also helpful to have these other tools for people who might not be taking advantage of the grant funds, who might be doing the work on their own or are thinking about what work they want to do and are planning in advance. We've seen that be very useful for folks to just understand what those features are. If you all are, since you all are going into the design review realm, we can provide some training as well on the preservation standards and character-defining features and how to think about them, how to talk about them in a, in a design review setting and provide some practice for that. And also the public could be invited to those. So if they want to understand what you're talking about when you're talking about, what are the features of a building that should remain to convey that character? So that's a possibility if you are interested in that in the future.
How long would that take? Would that be an hour session like this or something different?
Depends on how we go about it, but usually it would, it could be less. It could be a 30-minute session. It could be a watch. We have one where you can watch the course online and then one of our staff comes and answers questions and.
We have meetings quarterly and we could invite guests, you know, guest speaker for that kind of thing for 15, 20 minutes, 30 minutes, if that would fit what you would be willing to do in outreach.
Sure.
Seems logical.
Yeah.
We haven't had designer, two things. We haven't really studied our design review ordinance yet to see where we fit in. And number two, we really haven't had a case where, here's Ron. We haven't had a case to employ it, our work. So that would have been, for instance, the police building. Had the voters passed this, we would have had some work to do, probably. Let me introduce Ron. Ron, this is Curry Gill and this is Ron Woodruff, our restoration architect. And we've covered quite a bit of ground, but I think you're familiar with most of it. Okay, we introduced you already as your, as to your qualifications.
All right, let me think about this for a minute. So other ways to kind of get people to engage in understanding the value of that historic character and wanting to maintain that on their own is some of the public engagement you're doing, like the tours program that you're doing. We've seen other people do things to really highlight the historic features on properties like scavenger hunts, where they take photos, like close up photos of a feature on a building and then people have to try to figure out what building it is. That kind, and coloring books are also another one. That kind of thing helps people think about those important pieces of a building that if those weren't there, would it still look historic? How many pieces can go away before it doesn't retain that historic character? So any kind of public engagement like that as well, where they're not only learning the history and that historical significance, but how to still convey that? What makes what's in Dallas downtown different from everywhere else? And there's a lot, actually, this is a pretty special downtown area. We do have a few courthouse squares, but not many in the state. And, and the size of your buildings and the cadence of your buildings, it's, it's, it's a special place. So people need to understand that and people that live in these places. It's like, I talked to Portland people and they have Mount Hood, like right out their windows. And I go to Portland and I talk about it and they're like, oh yeah. I was like, you mean you do not pause and look at that mountain every day when you're here? Because we don't, we live in it. You don't pause and look at every, these cool buildings every day. Well, you all might because you care about this stuff and you think about this stuff. But people who just live here don't take that pause and don't reflect on that. And you got to get them to do that because when they think about it, they're like, yeah, that's part of why I like to be downtown, that's why I like to hang out in this place. But you have to remind them that that's part of why, otherwise they kind of just live their lives and forget about it. So any kind of engagement like that where you're having them pause and make that connection about why this place is special because of these historic features, that's a good activity to come up with. And that's a great one to partner with Main Street on or museums or other folks who are doing this work as well and your tourism entity for sure.
We have two or three big events downtown, right downtown. For instance, Halloween, we'll get a couple thousand people downtown all dressed up. The historic buildings kind of have that Halloween feel to them, you know? We have a couple haunted houses and a cornfield there in where the Bank of America used to be. We call it a vacant lot. And so that, that creates a kind of a character of the place and it gets bigger every year, more elaborate. Scarecrow contests downtown, parade downtown, we get thousands of people down for that. We take advantage in that way, but just day to day almost, it's, it's hard getting people out of their cars. There are people, correct me if I'm wrong on this, that you run into, said they, they live in town, they lived here for a few years and they've never been downtown. That's the weirdest thing, but I've run into it. And I don't know how you get those people out of their three bedroom, two bath, you know, ranch style house and then with their automatic door opener and come downtown to the bars. We have, we're afflicted by, I think we talked about this quite a bit, but many churches, gyms, schools now occupying historic buildings. And that's not exactly what Nirvana that you might look for. Or you'd rather have a bookstore or a wine tasting shop instead of a gym, another gym. Gyms are great, but.
Yeah, well, maybe, maybe this feels like it kind of leans into more of a Main Street conversation about how to work with those gym folks to, maybe if you have that membership, you get 10% off one of the other places in downtown or on certain days or whatever. So there are ways to capture those people that are already coming here, but your role as this historic entity is to get them to realize the value of those historic buildings and those features and what it feels like, what it looks like to be downtown and how that could be different if those places didn't exist. Another tool that I think is really helpful to both have people understand the historic character and the historic buildings and also get people downtown and have that public engagement. And you do a lot of work, you have all these grant programs, is to do kind of hard hat tours where they can come in and see what's being done. And if they're, if they're, the work is addressing historic character, that can be pointed out. So like showing people how it's done and that the property owners are caring to do it and that this is an important impact. And also another way to talk about the value of those resources that are being put into the downtown area and that different organizations are bringing in funding externally to support the downtown area. Those are also pretty popular because you feel kind of special because you don't get to go into a construction zone every day. Well, you might, but lots of people don't. So it's kind of a fun thing to get to do and highlight that work that's happening. And that can then tie into awards programs. Most of the certified local governments do an award program where they acknowledge properties that have done work to preserve the historic property. Usually they keep it pretty simple and have the mayor give the award at a city council meeting at some point, just a certificate and an acknowledgement and maybe an article in some newsletter or paper, whatever you have locally. Those really go a long way, it doesn't seem like it matters, but it super matters and people are very competitive. So if they think there's a chance they can get an award for the work they've done, they can. Also Dallas participates in the Main Street program and we have the Oregon Heritage Excellence Awards that you could submit projects for on a state level and get some more recognition for the community and the property owners in that way. Those are things that are out in the world, you all could be the nominators for those projects to get that recognition out there.
Downtown Association has awards for a restoration and preservation part of their ceremony.
That's great, well, maybe you could somehow highlight it. Yeah, do something related or at least talk about it. Maybe invite those awardees to come share the work that they did and have it be a public thing where people can actually have an educational moment around it if they're already doing the award.
How do you attract people to our meetings? How do other HPCs attract an audience?
I think it's a mix. Most people have a mailing list of some sort, an email list of some sort that they've collected over time. A lot of the local jurisdictions have a water bill, they have the water program and so they put it in the water bill to announce things. A lot of them do special programming in May, which is Historic Preservation Month, so they don't try to do it all year round. They try to put a bunch of activity in that one time period, which gets a little bit more attention and focus.
We had our mayor do a proclamation for Historic Preservation Month this year.
That's great. I mean, you all could, you also, you're close enough, you could, and I don't know if this is a bad thing to say, so sorry if it is, but Monmouth and Independence coordinate Preservation Month activities every year. You all could add some in and do some shared promotion with them as well. We have in, in Deschutes County, Deschutes County Bend, Redmond Sisters. All four of them do giant Preservation Month programming, coordinate it together. So each one only does a few things, but they, they have a lot more on the agenda.
You could do that. Monmouth Independence are joined at the hip and just about everything. But we're allowed in sometimes.
I feel like it could be a good fit, they're nice. And you're on the commission in Monmouth, right? So you have, you have an in over there.
I had lunch with the mayor the other day, with both of them.
And I think, you know, you were mentioning earlier that maybe the preservation review slows things down, design review wise or process wise. So just looking for ways to evaluate that when you all get to see that code and are talking about your role in it, the city's role and looking for ways to ensure preservation is happening, but expedite the process for people is a, is a really good thing to do. So I always recommend if there are code revisions that you kind of pay really close attention over a year to see what happens based on the number of projects coming in and try to evaluate if your process is unwarrantedly slowing things down. If it's really complex and they're doing things that are altering the historic character significantly, that's part of the process. But if there are ways to give them information so that they can make choices to meet the standards and move right along, that could.
Guessing if they have a consultant like Rebecca or somebody like that, that helps them prepare for what they're going to face when they go to get permits and funding and grants and taxes and all sorts of stuff.
If they have a consultant that understands preservation, yes.
It's what we endeavor to do is to have people who understand it. It's very important to us, I think you can see outside your.
I mean, that's another, that's another, that's another thing that you all could do. You could have a consultant list of people who understand preservation that would be easy for property owners to find. You could have contractor lists of contractors who understand preservation on historic properties and make it easier for people to find.
Starting to assemble that, you know, roofers who work on old buildings, that's not all the roofers, certain roofers can do it, et cetera.
That can be a useful tool. You can also, if you have contractors or interested in doing more preservation work and they want to expand their training, you could use your CLG dollars to send them for training. There's, Class Up Community College has several programs that are weekend long classes that we see lots of contractors going to who want to get it. They're already doing contractor work, but they want to get into this realm a little bit more and you could help them do that in that way. So again, kind of thinking about, A, how to keep the community engaged and on board with it with preservation and the value of these historic properties and then making it really easy for people to, to do it. That's kind of how I measure that, that yellow phase in the treatment. And then it sounds like you're already providing all kinds of incentives with funding sources. And I know the Main Street organization consistently has a process to do the Main Street revitalization grant and has done that with other grant programs as well, so.
Are other big grant programs on the horizon or is it, things are kind of drying up? But I know the feds aren't as interested in, in giving out money as they used to be for oddball things.
Well, from a preservation perspective, there is still, there's the Paul Bruin Grant that is still active, that has a deadline in just a few days here, but certified local governments and nonprofits are eligible to apply as is the State Historic Preservation Office. We got that funding about five years ago, six, for historic theaters where the Dallas Cinema was funded by that program. We're not sure if the State Historic Preservation Office is going to apply for those in the future or how we'll frame it, but other entities are eligible to do that. And it's to create a sub grant program.
Theaters are fragile in small towns, very fragile.
They're fragile everywhere.
But a great asset, like local newspapers is also a fragile asset, which helps with historic preservation, I think, you know, can publicize what we do. Social media, my goodness, buried in there somewhere.
There's definitely social media. Are there things that you all were hoping to hear today? Are there things that are bubbling up that in a, in conversations that you have next to kind of think about what you want to work on? Are there things sort of bubbling up of interest that I could respond to? Also just know, I'm a person who thinks of 18 things, like while I'm driving home from something like this. So Tyler can reach out to me and so please send questions and ideas and comments and I'm happy to respond to those too, if you're not thinking of them right now.
That would probably be a good idea because we originally started out basically as a design review commission. In other words, we were expected to give the go ahead to pass on plans that owners had for, for their building facades. And as is, I guess as is true in most committees, the boundaries keep expanding so that there's more and more and more to do. So, and more and more and more that this commission is responsible for. So I think, you know, asking the questions as they come up is, would be very, very beneficial.
One of the things that I think might help us if we had a procedures manual. In other words, there are some things that we have on our list to do that require three or four steps in the right order. And it would be good to have a procedures manual said if we want to get a new listing on our local register, for instance, what steps do we, do we encounter? You know, there's usually four or five, you know, that has to go here, it has to have this form filled out, it has to talk to so and so, has to meet this regulation. But if you have that, instead of just learning every time you're doing it, you know, just parsing through a whole pile of paperwork, it'd be a lot easier. And I wonder if there's other historic preservation commissions that have a procedures manual that they work from.
So they, it depends and certainly that is a question that could be asked of the CLGs on the listserv. If they do, I see most of them use, like for local designation, most of them use their ordinance to describe that process. So some of them will have procedures for specific pieces. I've never seen one with a full like Historic Preservation Commission Procedures Manual. It's usually piece by piece. You could create, you could, once you get your new ordinance, it would be good to start with that and be like, okay, if somebody comes to us and wants to do this thing, what do we need to have in place to do that? You can put the ask out on the listserv to see if other communities have that. The risk there is you're going to just have to use it as a guide because everybody's ordinance is different, but.
Sure, but it would be simplifying, instead of having to go back through the whole ordinance and everything, it's just here's a step by step process for how to do this or that. It wouldn't encourage more work, I think, that we could do faster. You know, I think design review can get pretty sticky sometimes about what you have to do and when. And the Historic Preservation Office or we have to work with that person, which is Tyler in our case. And there's some tricky little wording in there about who approves what and when. And there's these things where it says and/or, 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 and/or. And it works out, if you, if you play the grammar game, you can end up with just, if you've got 10 things that each say and/or, 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 you can end up with just one thing.
Right.
And, and it could be the easiest way out because it doesn't say anything. There's one thing in that list like that that doesn't say hardly anything. So it could be, or you could eliminate the other nine and end up with this 10th one that doesn't mean anything. That's a really odd way to do business, but it's the way it's written.
Well, you could, when, when you get it, you could take a look at it together and. Well, you could, when, when you get it, you could take a look at it together and set your priorities for the things that you think you're gonna see most frequently or sooner than later and create those procedures. That could be a great first step.
I don't think we were asked to review it, to consult on the, the changes, so that would have been one of my pet peeves, I suppose.
Yes. So the historic commission ideally would be reviewing any code changes related to their work. I assume that there is a public process, so when it goes to planning commission and then to city council, you could provide your input there and.
That's what they urge us to do is to testify, but by then the, the concrete is hardening on, on those things. Gets pretty hard by the time it gets to city council.
Hopefully when you're living with the new code for a while, you'll be able to suggest possible revisions as it comes through.
Be involved earlier in that process. We could make, for instance, recommendations for improvements to it when they alter it. Alternatives in the development and the municipal code though take years. Just changing our name took three years. From Landmarks Commission to Historic Preservation Commission.
It is a process, for sure.
It is. Government knows process.
I mean, sure, they do. It helps allow for public engagement though.
Sure. Can you give us the short version about the public meetings law and how that affects us? We've not had any training in that and it seems to be kind of a hot issue and.
It's a hot issue for sure. Training is required, so I hope the city would be providing that for all of your public bodies. And you all as individuals are responsible for a public meeting process. So even if that's not being provided to you, the state has a website, the Department of Justice website, you can look it up. Public Meetings, Oregon State Justice Department. And it, they provide training there that you can access. Some of it's like recorded webinars, some of it is printed materials. It's all up to date. The bigger, the big issues right now that are coming up is ex parte contact. So having information about a project or decision or discussion before the meeting. So there are some challenges that probably will be coming around subcommittees and smaller groups that aren't the quorum doing that work. That was how people did subcommittees before because they didn't have a quorum. They could do work and bring it to the body. They now can't come to the body with a recommendation. So they could have discussion and share discussion and that would be okay, but if they come with a recommendation, that's decision making outside the public meeting. And so there's a fine line now. That may or may not be upheld, but it currently exists. So you can still do subcommittees. Typically you would call them information gathering committees and the group brings that information then to the body and the body has the discussion without a recommendation. That's the biggest issue that we're seeing in it, but it is definitely required for people to have training. And so I highly recommend that you look into that.
We'll ask about that then because we, we're not receiving the training. I sit on three of these boards and we've, none of us have gotten training. League of Oregon Cities, by the way, recommends you not follow the guidance in the state websites or whatever they are because they're controversial.
Then your city should be advising you. I, I work for the state, so I have to follow the state requirements, so.
We have the League of Oregon Cities we work with a lot. The city does. And they're, they've had some issues.
Yes. Lots of organizations have issues.
We don't want that to cripple us though. We want to live within the, in the law certainly, but we don't want it to undermine what we do. One of the things we've decided is that it's okay for, if we have a project, for instance, we have this project I passed out for the building narratives. And that's just a project. This is not policymaking or anything like that. And that's okay for us to hit the reply all button on that. And because it's.
That's for your city to determine.
Well, they haven't given us any guidance, so we docked about it at the meeting here and Tyler, I think, agreed with that. So that's the guidance we have.
Is up to you.
No, we know. I just wanted to talk about it just a little bit so that there's some familiarity with the public meetings law. Let's see, what else? Anybody who's got time? Websites, are they effective? People, or do we need to be on Facebook or something?
Websites are very effective. Making it easy for people to find it. Providing easy to use materials, so a lot of text is not helpful. Bullet points with attached documents kind of thing is usually more effective as far as websites. Images are always helpful. Social media can be great. It just depends on your community and your who you're trying to reach. You have a lot of partners, so it might be more effective to ask your partners to message on their social, like ask the city of course for theirs because you're a city body, but if you're working with urban renewal or your Main Street organization or your tourism organization, they probably have a bigger following. And so I would, I always lean into asking partners to do posting for social media.
Is there money available to buy bronze plaques? We've asked before and there never seems to be a grant for that kind of thing.
I don't know.
Yeah, we don't know.
The, the interpretive panels, there's a fair amount of funding for, but just the bronze plaques, they're not, I don't know, good places to get funding for them.
Looked into that. It'd be helpful, you know, those bronze plaques really are pretty cool on the historic buildings. How often do other HPCs meet? We meet quarterly. Is that enough, do you think, or depends?
Depends. It depends on the workload and what you're trying to achieve. If you have people that can take on a task and be kind of self-driven and work through that quarter and come back with something on a timeline, then that can work fine. I see most meeting more like six times a year unless they have a lot of design review and then there, those folks are bigger cities like Corvallis and not necessarily bigger cities have more locally designated properties. So Astoria, they meet monthly. Salem meets monthly. So those ones that have a lot of design review will meet monthly, but most don't. We have a few that don't have any locally designated properties, so they just do that public engagement piece.
We don't make use of subcommittees that I know of. We don't, haven't done that yet, but we're a bigger organization now. We may need some specifics about that. And I do look forward to, I think we all look forward to more talk of design review. We didn't have time to get into the bowels of all that because there's a a lot of twists and turns in design review. And each city has its own opinion about design review and, and its tolerance, let's call it, for design review.
Well, what's in the code is the, is the basis for your decisions. So I think once you have a past code, spending some time together, looking at that, evaluating it, finding out where you would have questions, come up with a mock hearing using that code is a really good practice so that you can ask questions. And then you could have our office come talk about standards and how to talk about the standards and how to think about the impacts to a building. It might be one, one small thing is worth letting go if the majority of the historic character is still there. But you have to be able to talk about that and not have it based on just how people feel.
I see, as I mentioned a, a little bit, I see a lot of weasel words in the, in our code about design review. It could go or, 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 or and, and. It's, it's, it's very experiential. You'd have to almost dive into something and see how it works because we've not done that yet in any, in any major way.
I think when you, when, when you get it past doing a mock hearing, like coming up with a property like from some other town, don't do one from here and pretend like you're doing a hearing on some piece of work from it. It actually really helps a lot.
Yeah, well, we could frame a fictional village, I guess, you know, that wants to build a police station in its downtown historic district and say, how, how would we deal with that? What, what would be our role?
For any kind of infill, right? It's a historic district. If a historic district gets locally designated, then infill would fall under design review. And then what is, what are those parameters? What are the criteria you're looking at for that infill work?
Where would we intervene? Where would we? What would we write up? What, what?
That would be based on the code.
In the code. But I'm telling, I'm thinking, I see lots of twists and turns in the code where it could go this way or it could go that way. So I think having some practical experience with it, like you're saying, a mock, a mock case and make it a little complicated maybe so that you have to engage several of the paragraphs might be worthwhile. And I think you all coming to talk to us specifically about design review, which we didn't hardly touch on today, would be worth an hour of our time.
As far as I know, we haven't done much design. I can remember one instance before you came on when the three of us sat down and had to review someone's plans of a building downtown. And we basically discussed it, voted on it and then sent it off.
So haven't done that in recent years, so.
We would need more of that, I think.
The way the ordinance is read, reads, we, we should be reviewing anything that's done to some degree in the historic district, the national historic district, if they're the way I read it anyway. We have a, a foot in, in the door on that. And this includes construction, remodels, restoration.
So until it becomes a local landmark?
Sorry?
Until it becomes a local landmark.
Yeah.
There should not be.
Resource, I think, resource is the word.
Right. So right.
Resource, we, we do not have a foot in the door, the way, unless it's an individual building that is on the national register.
That is locally designated. So you only have design review.
Locally designated. I'm sorry.
There's only design review for locally designated properties.
But it's very common to, as I mentioned, to make a historic district a resource as a whole.
Correct. If that happens, then you would have design review.
That's correct. But that, we're in the process of asking for that right now. I mean, I thought it would be further along than it is, but because we wanted it to go farther than it is, but we'll follow up. But then assuming that, I mean, you could just pick, most of these built, many of them in the district are on our local register.
So individually, they would, they could go under design review as an individual building, but then what infills next to that currently would not fall under design review.
That's correct. And that's one of the reasons this police building that they're going to build right here, they were going to build till the voters said no, would not fall under us unless it, we pass this ordinance about the, having the whole district be a resource.
Correct.
Historical resource. So we understand that.
Right.
We just, it's a slow process.
Okay. I thought you were saying that you had that right now.
No, we don't. Well, we do on certain buildings, but not the district as a whole, yet.
Right. So to sum up a little bit, because I know you're all gonna have conversations about next steps and setting your priorities. For sure, the, the design review piece is gonna be an important one for you to understand and practice. We can help with that, as I mentioned. So when you're thinking about your priorities, that might be one. I do really want to encourage you to keep doing that public engagement stuff. So you're doing that with the tour and maybe that's the thing this year that you focus on, but think about future, like over the next five years, what does that look like? What do you want to do as far as public engagement over the next five years? And what could that be? And who might have a role in that? It doesn't necessarily have to be you all doing that work. And then thinking about, when you're thinking about your design review, also be thinking about how to make it easy for people to do the preservation approach. So think of incentives, think about design support, think about other tools to help make it as easy as possible for them, like I could do this or that and this thing's more historic. How do you make it easy to get them to do that?
Thanks.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me.
Invite you back anytime.
Please let me know if you have follow up questions. Send them my way. I'm happy to respond to them.
Are you going to be around for just a minute after this? I'll walk and show you something right down the street here.
Sure.
Okay. And one last thing, guys. I put out this narrative on the assignments here. We only have three buildings now that we haven't been taken, spoken for. So let me know if somebody volunteered and so I don't have to do 10 of them. Anything else? We'll see you in three months. Is that right? Three months? October, three months from now. Thanks.